Appreciate everyone's patience. We'll call this meeting to order, regular sales school committee meeting, call the order at 7:38. It entertained a motion to approve the committee's agenda.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Mr. Fleming, seconded by Mr. Bryant. All those in favor?
Under discussion, Your Honor.
Under discussion on the approval of the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Dr. Walsh?
Under six Bentley School turnaround A presentation discussion with Lawrence Superintendent Receiver Jeff Riley. I don't recall the committee inviting, who invited Mr. Riley?
I did, Dr. Walsh.
So, okay. I assume then that that means that whoever wishes to have anyone address, any member wants anybody to address, the committee may do so at any time.
Well, Dr. Walsh, I thought it was relevant to the presentation before us for Bentley, so it was a related matter that we had on as an action item. I don't think we want to be having random things come up, but if there's anything you'd like on the agenda, please let me know.
I was not aware that you would have done it. If I was aware of it, I would have had members of the staffs of the Boston schools that were adversely affected by this organization, I probably would have had more. And also, I have new sources in Houston, Texas, which would tell you that their situation with the Apollo network was not exactly pleasant. It was more like Apollo 13 than anything else.
Dr. Walsh, that's an agenda item, and this has always been an agenda item, so you feel free to always...
Well, it's just a point, it's just a point of, well, I see this, Your Honor, as a sales pitch, and that's fine, but I just want, you know, in future, if I see something is relevant, if I, as an individual, decide that something is relevant to the agenda, then I have every right to bring someone in.
So, Dr. Walsh, I was just trying to answer. Folks, if you could bear with us, I know we have a long meeting, and I appreciate so many people are here. We want to make sure we have an opportunity to hear from everyone, but it can't be disrupted, so if you could keep some of the colliding to a minimum, that would be great. Dr. Walsh, I think the point I was trying to make is that we have public opportunities on our agenda at every single meeting. If you really felt like anybody at all wanted to offer comments, we certainly have ample time within the agenda twice for folks to do that. I didn't mean to catch anybody by surprise. In fact, as you know, I emailed the committee in advance to let them know that I invited Dr. Riley, because I thought we could have some examples of on the ground how these school partnerships are working, and I thought that would be important information to share with the committee. If there's ever anything that you'd like to place on the agenda, I hope you'd call me, and I'd be happy to assist with making sure that happens.
My point, Madam Chairman, is I'm not sure that it is the internal purview of any individual member of the committee to invite someone to speak before the committee.
Well, I would tend to disagree with you on that, Dr. Walsh. I think it does matter that it's worthwhile for us to hear from them. I would hope that we'd all agree on that.
I shall keep that under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Madam Honorable Editor.
Madam President.
Oh, I'm sorry. Correct. Mr. Fleming?
That also is going to be a discussion with the committee, right?
That's correct.
So, there'll be questions from the committee.
Correct. Mr. Fleming?
And if anyone hasn't said it already, Dr. Riley, welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the approval of the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, the ayes have it?
I have not yet received an answer relative to my question three weeks ago relative to the length of the contract that we have before us, agreement that we have before us, and I don't see any language that clarifies that agreement. The best I can guess at is that it is one year, then at least five years when the charter is in place. So, we're stuck with this agreement, in my reading of it, at least six years. I don't think that this municipality can enter into a contract in that way. And I draw your, my own experience, I can't hire for an entity that I'm involved with that's a state entity, I can't hire an investment manager for more than five years. So, I don't understand what the length of this contract is to be if we were accepted tonight. Secondly, I don't think you could have a very undefined length of time. I think you have to have, in a municipal contract, defined times relative to the length of the contract. Third, I don't think we have an exit strategy in this MOU. I put that question three weeks ago to this committee, and I still don't hear or see in that agreement an exit strategy. If, in fact, we're not satisfied with Blueprint, if, in fact, we want to get rid of them, what and how is that methodology? I don't see it, and I think it should be in this agreement before we accept it.
So, I think we did talk about this at the last meeting, and the contract term is one year, and then it moves into the Horace Mann. So, that's not exactly a contract under this particular language. The Horace Mann Charter would then take precedent in those out years, so that in terms of the length of the contract, our legal entry point of contract, Mr. Fleming, that's handled that way. There are performance standards laid out, and at the last meeting, we also talked about the protections you have under Horace Mann. In fact, if you are displeased or dissatisfied with the operator, there are certainly remedies within the Horace Mann statute to accommodate that.
The Board of Trustees, not the school committee.
Correct. It would be, it would be going to remove the charter, correct?
Right. There should be a mechanism, whereas even in the first year, if we're not satisfied, we should have, there's no mechanism displayed in any of the, in any of the MOUs that I've been given, that has an exit strategy relative to non-performance by Blueprint. None. Secondly, you can't define the length of a contract amorphously tied to the length of a charter. You have to have definiti in a municipal contract. You don't have it in this con, in this contract, and this is a contract.
Just to be clear, this is only a contract for a year with a renewal, with a commitment to enter into Horace Mann. Entering into an agreement with Blueprint, once it becomes a charter school, it will be up to the operator at that time, and since it's that, if we obviously want to be a seamless, consistent, you know, exercise happening as in schools, and so that's the intention. I'm sharing with you what the intention is, Mr. Fleming, and again, we did spend a fair amount of time on this at the last meeting, and I'm sorry that...
Didn't get into the document, that's what I'm saying. Whatever your time is...
Well, I think the explanation that I shared, the view, is the way that we wrestled with the particular issue that you raised.
I also had a question relative to how this MOU can modify or water down the rights and obligations given to the superintendent by stature. I have yet to see, have an answer for that, and that, I can yet see that it is, for example, in this MOU, that it's Blueprint that picks the principal and not the superintendent. I think that's violated of state law.
So, I'd share with you that the lawyers did take a look at that issue. Ms. Caldwell is here, who participated on behalf of the school district in a number of numerous meetings with respect to statutory obligations, and there is language in here that clarifies the superintendent will not reasonably withhold his approvals for items.
No, it says, it says they will pick.
Correct, and I believe it was catch-all language, I'm looking at Ms. Caldwell, because it's catch-all language, that the superintendent will not unreasonably withhold approvals as necessary within statutory contracts. And maybe I believe it also is supposed to follow all state laws, or unless it's not part of the state or federal law.
Right, and the state law is that the superintendent picks the principal. Here it is. Hasn't been the case to date, and it isn't the case demonstrated in the agreement or in the MOU.
Again, I think the language is clear that the idea is that...
Smart bit, and we still thank you. That's your answer, that's fine.
Anything else before we move on? Mr. Riley?
Through you, through you, Madam Chair, Mr. Fleming, with this, are you concerned about the legality of this, that it could result in any kind of transaction lawsuit?
I'm concerned, and then you have to look further in this MOU, you have to look further in this MOU, and if there is any discussion or contest, the cost of that contest, the cost of that legal proceeding is only on, for both parties, all three parties, is only on the city of Salem. Nobody else pays anything. In here, it says, "We are responsible for all costs relative to the interpretation of this disagreement." I don't think that's very fair. I don't know if that was thought of, but I don't think that's very fair at all. We would pay all costs for all parties?
Anything else, Mr. Fleming? Dr. Walsh?
His question struck me, I did think it was a little confusing about just how long this contract is and all this. As I understand, the second part of the agreement will be with the Board of Trustees. Who picks the Board of Trustees?
So, the charter application under this will have to be filed, and we'll be working closely, obviously, on the preparation of that charter, and we'll be working collaboratively to select the Board of Trustees.
Collaborating with?
Amongst ourselves. It's certainly a school committee, the application will be going forward, but it's something the school committee has to agree to. It's a school committee document to violate the charter.
At the last meeting, I probably misunderstood, but it sounded as though Blueprint...
Nope, not at all.
Was going to pick the Board of Trustees. That's not true?
That is not true. Anything else before we ask Mr. Riley to come forward? These folks are going through that. Well, you have ample time afterwards anyways. I want to thank Jeff Riley, who I had an opportunity to do, to do a presentation around the district schools in Lawrence, some of the on the ground, how this looks on the ground from the perspective of having a large school district that has both traditional public schools and schools being operated by partners within one particular community. What I found most interesting from the presentation was not only some of the success they had, which is terrific, I think we're all rooting for Lawrence to do well, and to see some of the success they've had in a very short part, period of time, was very impressive, but I think how seamless the operation was on the ground in terms of principals and partner schools, being part of the leadership team, some of the cross-pollination that's happening between district schools and partner schools, and I thought it would be very worthwhile for him to come and share some of that experience here, to give us some insights into how this looks on the ground. We spent a lot of time at the last meeting, going through line by line, the technical aspects of the MOU, and who's doing what, and a lot of legal language, and I actually thought having Jeff here would give us a chance to get a better understanding of what's this going to mean for kids, how's this going to impact our own district in terms of operations, and to share, frankly, some of the lessons learned, both good or bad perhaps, from Lawrence with us as a school district would be useful and helpful, and he graciously agreed to attend. I don't know that you thought it was going to be this packed, so I appreciate you being here and giving us an opportunity to hear a little bit more about what's happening in Lawrence and how it's going.
Thanks for having me. Let me assure you, I'm not here to sell anyone anything. I'm merely to kind of show you some of our experiences. We recognize that Lawrence is a very different district than Salem, but we have been doing some restructuring in our district, and we just wanted to kind of share some of those experiences, hopefully good and bad, so as you consider the vote before you, you have some more information. I will try not to get into edgy jargon, as that is both painful for all of us. I guess I'd like to say at the outset, my primary orientation is as a principal. I was a principal in Boston of a school that went from being the worst performing school in Boston to not just the highest performing, but actually beating the state average, despite the fact that we had well over 90% of our students in poverty, two-thirds of our kids were second language learners, and more than a third were special education. This is personal to me. My kids attend the Boston Public Schools. One of my children is what I would call a high flyer. Things sometimes come too easily for him, and one of my other children has some serious special needs, so that is where I come from, that's kind of who I am, and when the commissioner called me to come to Lawrence to be the superintendent receiver, I had many questions. There was a lot of people that said Lawrence was in incredibly bad shape. There was some more virulent people in the ed reform community who said they were turning it all into charter schools and blowing the district up. But when I got there, what I found was, there's actually a lot of talented people in the district, and that the things that we had to do was really assess and get people lined up in the right way. So, I felt like 90% of our teachers were great, good, or working hard to improve. We did have some people that I didn't think were good for kids, and that I wouldn't want my own children in front of, but I felt like more of the problem in Lawrence was about two things. Leadership at the principal level, I replaced half of the principals in Lawrence, and I would say the size of central office, I reduced by about a third, believing that those dollars were better spent at the school level on things like a longer school day and compensation for teachers and things like that. I'm going to only go through parts of this presentation, I don't want to bore folks, but before receivership, we were kind of in the bottom 1%. Only about 29% of our kids were proficient on math, 41% proficient in English, and only half the kids that started in ninth grade graduated in four years. We got some special authorities under receivership, things like district governance, collective bargaining, staffing and school design, but as I said, we felt like most of our schools were actually doing a good job and just needed to be kind of put in a place to succeed. We did have some Level 4 schools. This, by the way, this little slide here is what's happening across the country. There's a fight between traditional schools and charter schools. What I know about this is pretty simple, which is parents don't really care, they just want a good school for their kid. And although I lean towards the district model, every teacher inside my district is an AFT union district teacher, and I believe in that deeply. I believe teachers need to have collective bargaining rights. I've also seen some good things that came out of charter schools, and so when we had a small percentage of schools go into Level 4, what we did is kind of assess what each school needed. Some of the schools went into the transformational bucket. I think you guys may know about this, where you get kind of extra professional development, and you kind of right the ship from within. And so that happened at some of our high schools. Some of our other Level 4 schools, we felt needed a bigger intervention, and so we brought in EMOs, educational management organizations. Some were charter schools that gave up their charter, gave up their lottery, became unionized, and took over a school. Some were led by a teacher who was, taught math for 20 years, and had this amazing project called Spark Academy, where they interspersed high-quality fitness activities with a longer school day and really targeted academic interventions based on all this research that says that kids that exercise before they learn actually do better. And one of our schools in Level 4, we gave over to an EMO known as the Lawrence Teachers Union. We created a partnership school with our teachers' union and gave them the school. And at the end of the day, what we're looking to do is really kind of disrupt what was happening in some of those places and shake things up. Now, at some of these EMO organizations, and there's only a handful, we had to take some teachers and move them out and absorb them in other places in the district. And I want to be clear about this, this is really important. A lot of those teachers were amazing teachers, right? It just, it was, for whatever reason, it just wasn't working, and so, not surprisingly, a bunch of my principals came out and tried to steal people right away. They're like, "Ooh, I want that teacher, I want this teacher," and it was a hard transition for them, but because they felt so wanted in other places in the district, I think it really worked out well for us. It wasn't perfect. There were some angry people, there were some upset people, but at the end of the day, it was really supposed to be about kids. You know, we're trying to really push our autonomy and resources down in schools, let the teachers, the principals, and the parents figure out what their schools need. This is a very anti-bureaucratic central office approach. We've actually asked central office to be a support to the schools instead of a command and control compliance mechanism, do this, do that, as long as that you prove that you can get good outcomes for kids. I won't go into the details of that. I think one of the things I want to talk about is recognizing great teachers. A lot of what we've done in Lawrence is, we've added some extra time, some of it's over the vacations. We had 2,000 kids give up their April vacation to get extra math help, and we matched them with our best math teachers in the district and other people across the state and got them this intensive tutoring, because we think that a longer day and more time is what moved the needles. We have something called Teacher Leader Cabinet, where 100 of our teachers come and meet with me on a monthly basis to help me kind of figure out what happens in schools. When I was a principal, 90% of what I did was to support the teachers so they could do their jobs, right? I don't mind doing lunch duty, discipline, paperwork, whatever, because the real work of education is what happens in those classrooms, and that's what we were trying to get done. We work with our union, I see some of our union friends here today, and we're proud to do that, we're proud to be an AFT district. Our early results, and let me be clear, we have a tremendous way to go. We've only been on the ground for a little while, but after years of declines in English growth, we're up four points. Math actually went up the highest in the history of the district. We went up 17 SGP points, for those of you that know and love SGP, and we're trying to do this with people and together and enlist people in the process. You know, the graduation rate has gone up over the last couple of years. As we said, when we came here, it was about 50%. We're up into the low 60s. We think we might be in the mid 60s or 70s by the end of this year, and the dropout rate has gone down at the same time. You know, and we just have different partners. At the end of the day, we made some tough choices to bring in outside organizations to contract with us, not to just give them the keys and turn it loose, but to say, "You're now part of the district. Your teachers are unionized. Your principals have to go to my professional development meetings. You are part of the district, and we're going to give you a contract, and if you don't live up to that contract, then we're going to make changes, and we're going to hold people accountable." But I think, at the end of the day, if you have a situation where something is not working, you have to make a tough choice, and I don't know anything about what's happening on the ground here, I promise you I don't. What I can say is, you have to decide, you know, what is in the best interest of students. And for me, at a few of our schools, we had to go with this EMO approach, and we've had, we think preliminarily, we've had some really good success, but we've got a long way to go, and there are things that, you know, have to be ironed out when you go down this path. So, I think that's kind of the basic overview, and I don't know if folks have questions.
So, in the school committee, Mr. Fleming?
Yep.
Jeff, before you ask a question, thank you for coming up and sharing part of the story. I know Lawrence has a long way to go, as you indicated, but as I said, we all are rooting for the community, new mayor, new opportunities within the school, and definitely some really important work being done, and we're, we've got some important work to do here as well.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Fleming?
Thank you, ma'am. I echo her remarks. Your situation was a lot different than the Salem situation. You were a Level 5 district, I believe, when you were in the receiving.
Sure.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
And your district now, before you got there, was in a Level 4 mode, and had three years to turn that around. Is that correct?
That's, well, that's incorrect. We had some schools that were Level 4. We actually, because, well, I just want to point this out, because there was a lot of people casting aspersions on the Lawrence Public Schools, but we actually had two Level 1 schools. And last year, we had four or five Level 1 schools, and so, there's a lot of schools that actually do great work, but sometimes the reputation doesn't catch up in time to what that could have.
It's not an attack. I'm just saying, you were a Level 5 district, a 4 district, because you had Level 4 schools.
Sure.
All right. So, you had completed that three-year period, and I don't know if they used turnaround or they used the other method, but they had, they had an opportunity under the law to try to turn those around, and they were given the full three years to do so.
No, that wasn't entirely true. So, there's, a lot of our schools are still in the middle of that process. I made a difficult decision at the Arlington School. They had, they had been one of the schools that went to transformational route, more professional development, and based on my assessment, it just wasn't going to work. And so I had to make a really difficult decision to turn that over to an EMO, and that decision was borne out, because the test scores actually, you know, got even worse, even despite the turnaround monies and everything else. But at the end of the day, it really came down to what's best for kids.
How many EMOs do you have in Lawrence?
Oh, I'm going to say we have, you're going to make me count now, I'm going to say we have five or six.
And how many of those are Blueprint or Powell?
Blueprint has none of...
We have no Blueprint. So, you don't have any experience whatsoever with Blueprint?
I have no experience with Blueprint. I do know the potential candidate, Mr. Vernon, from my time in Boston, who was a strong principal there, getting great improvement in Lawrence.
So, specifically, the question is, you have no Blueprint as an EMO in the city of Lawrence?
I do not. What I would say is, we have matched tutors, which I think Blueprint did in Houston, if I'm getting my history right. I believe in the tutoring model.
They did in the Apollo schools in Houston.
Yeah, so I think, so I believe in the tutoring model, and we do have that with great success at some of our transformational Level 4 high schools. But that's about it. I can't speak in a deep way.
When those EMOs came in, I understand you had to absorb those teachers with professional status, is that correct?
Sure.
But you didn't have to absorb those teachers without professional status?
You know, I think because Lawrence is a situation where we do have some transients, that we're able to absorb folks, and we also phased in our schools, rather, most of our schools, so rather than turning a school over en masse, we kind of started one grade at a time, or two grades at a time.
Staggered implementation.
Right, which I think makes it easier. You know, you really want to be respectful of the teachers that are being impacted, the children, I mean, it's, we try to be really thoughtful about how we did it.
So, your experience that at least in most schools in Lawrence that have EMOs, that all of the teachers, both with professional status and without professional status, were absorbed, and were not hired by the EMO, were absorbed by the Lawrence system?
I believe that is the case. I mean, if there was a non-professional teacher that the principal at the time didn't feel should be renewed, I'm sure we had a few people that were non-renewed. Under three years, they weren't doing well, but, you know, I think Mr. McGlaughlin's here, he might be able to answer the question, but we try to take great care in placing our tenured professional status teachers into spots where they felt they could do well.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming down and describing your description.
Mr. Bryant?
Thank you. Again, I want to echo the sentiments of the mayor and Mr. Fleming. Appreciate you being here. Two questions. One, for those school or schools that opted for the transition model first, I think you mentioned the Arlington School, at what point during that three-year period did you decide to opt for an EMO?
I believe it was after the first year.
Okay. You could just give us some, I think...
You know, we had done numerous walkthroughs, we had a lot of assessment data that just basically says that, you know, things weren't improving. I think there were some good teachers over there, in fact, I know there were, but for whatever reason, things weren't changing, and I felt really compelled that I had to do right by parents and give their kids a better experience, and so we took that measure.
And my second question is, Mr. Fleming referenced that you didn't consider, or Blueprint was not one of the... I guess my question is, were they in contention for one of the school turnaround?
So, I don't think they were in contention at any point during our time. We really, I believe, kind of been in, looking around and seeing what resources were close by. I mean, there are turnaround providers at different places closer to Boston, like you guys, I think. We opted, you know, we opted for the Lawrence Teachers Union, we opted for Community Day, which has been a school inside Lawrence and had a great track record.
Let me ask, let me ask you a different way. Did they apply and were not considered?
No, I have no knowledge of that. I don't think so.
Mr. Schultz?
Mr. Riley, the charters that agreed to give up their charters, what was that process like, and how did you convince them, right? Because you have, you have statute that requires certain things, and you have them trying to, you know, apply their model with fidelity.
So, I think, I always get in trouble when I talk about this. So, I think, you know, charter schools were set up to be these laboratories of innovation, that were always supposed to come back and inform the traditional public school model, but instead, what you had happen is this kind of Cold War division. And there were some people that always talked quietly amongst themselves, and I've seen some good charter schools. I don't agree with everything, and so in the system I set up, we asked people to take a leap of faith, to give up their charter, to give up their lottery, and to be unionized, and that's the system that works for us. Certainly, Horace Mann is another way to do that, to keep people in the district, right? But to the idea that you could destroy an entire school system and turn it into charter schools, that was never a consideration for us. I thought that was pretty disrespectful to the people that were working so hard, and so the changes we made were kind of at the level where we thought change needed to be made, where clearly there would have been a history of struggle, results would continue to be poor, and we had to do something different for the kids.
So, with the example of enrollment and the lottery-style enrollment, that's in statute, statute, you were able to modify that? You were able to...
So, there is no lottery. They just take the neighborhood kids.
They just take the neighborhood kids.
Yeah. It's a neighborhood school system in Lawrence, and then they all feed into one giant system.
Then what autonomies do they have?
So, you know, I think they have inside of the, if you think about it as, we kind of provide the foundation and the walls of the house. They have a lot of white space inside there to kind of run their model as they see fit. There are certain district requirements that we have to have, they have to come to meetings, they have to be unionized, but how they set up their shop inside is up to them. And the only thing that we say is, you know, "We're doing a contract with you. We expect that you're going to perform." And the beauty of having a contract is that if they don't, then you can, you know, make whatever necessary changes.
And in terms of your decentralized approach, because I appreciate the value of that as well, certain schools, I would imagine, you would not give this kind of gradual release of autonomy to until they met certain benchmarks. Can you talk about that?
So, I think that's absolutely right. I think it's, we call it kind of bounded autonomy, where when you prove that you're doing well, you get a lot more freedom to continue down the path. We're not just kind of giving the keys to all the, all the schools. We recognize that some schools... We recognize that some schools need more support, and they'll have less white space inside of that school building and more support from the district. And there's a variation of people that have that. So, some schools we're really worried about may go to Level 4 next year. I mean, we're, we're highly invested in supporting those schools. Other schools that, you know, some of our Level 1 schools, the Frost Middle School, the South Lawrence East Elementary School, these are schools that have been high flyers for years, Level 1s for years. We're giving them a lot more authority to say, this is what we know is right. So, it's a kind of continuum on the spectrum. I spent a lifetime as a principal, kind of evading and ignoring the central office in Boston. So, it's a great irony to be in the position I'm in now. But I wanted to set up a system where the central office kind of worked for the schools and not the other.
And one last point. How do you determine effective leadership in the schools? I mean, it's my belief that leadership is, is more significant than a lot of people realize. And we have a lot of great teachers, but without great leadership, great ideas, great implementation, hard work, and things like that, it's tough to pull it all together in schools, so.
I mean, just being a principal is such a complicated endeavor. You have to have so many different hats. You have to know teaching and learning, certainly. You have to know budget, finance. You have to know marketing. You have to be able to work with kids, you know, have to be able to work with adults. And I think, you know, people's skills are probably the number one priority, with a deep understanding of teaching and learning backing that up. But it's being able to kind of be fair and build consensus and get everyone on the same page, and that's, that's hard to do, right? I mean, that's not, that's not, you know, an easy person to find. But what we saw, we believe that, like, working together is much more impactful than kind of a leader at the top that's just barking orders at people. We kind of believe that enlisting people is the way to really make real change.
Thank you.
Other questions? Your comments, please. Dr. Walsh?
Yes, Mr. Riley. How long have you been on receiving lines?
I'm entering into my third year.
Next year?
Next year, yeah. So, I kind of came mid-year in January, so two and a half months.
And you mentioned in your remarks that you expect to see good MCAS results this year or better than MCAS results this year.
Well, last year, we were one of, if not the most improved school district in Massachusetts, but we think we're actually going to have more positive signs coming forward.
And how much emphasis would you put on for planning for next year, what those schools look like this year?
Say more about that.
Well, MCAS is considered a very large part of school success.
Yep.
So, would you be basing decisions about your schools next year, to some extent, on this year's MCAS results?
I think that's always a factor. It's one factor that we use. I want to be clear, I believe deeply, in MCAS testing.
It's an important factor.
But, I also want to say that it can be limited. For those of you old enough to remember, we started MCAS and it was all about absolute performance. I'm actually more interested in the growth metric about improvement, which I think is a good result. But even MCAS testing is not the be-all and end-all of a student's development. We're spending a lot of time and money adding back enrichment and arts opportunities for our kids, because we think that's critical to what is going to be successful. It may never show up on an MCAS test, but it's really important to the kids' lives. When I think about how we assess our kids, we want our kids to have kind of the American dream, the idea that, you know, if you work hard enough, anyone can do or be anything they want. That actually only works if all kids start in the same place. City kids often are way behind, and we've got to catch them up, but not just in testing. I would say, because these high-quality enrichment opportunities are things that my kids don't always have access to, but suburban kids often take for granted. So, I'm trying to provide a commensurate experience for my city kids, so that when they're 17 and 18, they're on par with a suburban kid. In every way, MCAS tests, musical theater, debate league...
My question was strictly about MCAS.
Yeah.
It is a significant part in making a decision as to whether or not a school is doing well.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. What was the role of the parents in making these changes to these schools?
So, you know, I think when I came to Lawrence, a lot of people said the parents didn't care. The reality of the situation was, we didn't, as a district, do a good job of inviting parents into the schools. And so, when we went through these Level 4 processes, we had stakeholder groups. We were about to open a family welcome center, and we tried to have them involved in the process of change, whatever that may be, whether it's the Lawrence Partnership School, the AFT School, or whether it's Spark Academy, or what have you, we tried to have them involved in the process.
Were they directly involved in what kind of a model we might have chosen?
You know, I think they were, we did a lot of surveying, we did kind of community circles with parents. We took a lot of input for the kind of things they wanted. I don't know if we said, you want this model versus that model. We were just trying to figure out what was best for the school at that time. I think, in some cases, because we had a little bit more understanding of the educational landscape, we were able to kind of direct the appropriate model for whatever school needed.
Thank you. Did I hear correctly, you do have school attendance areas? You live on, you live on X Street, you go to Y school?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
That's throughout. There's not a lot of...
No, we're a neighborhood school system. Coming from the Boston Public Schools, where we spent over $100 million on busing children out of the district, it was a beautiful thing to come to a neighborhood-based school system.
Do you have any tendencies, I'm going to go Title 1 direction, so...
Fair enough.
Do you have any policies where you might move more compensatory funds to struggling schools?
Yeah, I mean, I think, well, as you know, I mean, Lawrence is a pretty impoverished area, so a lot of our schools are eligible for those additional dollars. When you go Level 4, you're eligible for SRG grant money as well. And we really worked hard to try to work with the foundation community in Massachusetts to try to raise additional dollars. Lawrence has historically been a district that did not meet its net school spending number. And so, there's probably 10 districts in Massachusetts that couldn't meet that basic threshold. Most districts, as you know, meet the threshold and then add tax base, you know. Boston might be 100% plus 20% tax base. Cambridge might be 100% in net school spending plus 70%, you know, on top of that, whatever it is. But Lawrence was always in the 97, 98% because they needed to take some money to pay for police and fire and to keep lights on in street hall and things like that. And so...
This may be a little less germane to tonight's discussion, but just for future reference, I mentioned Title 1. How do you spend your Title 1 money? You have, is it all full-time staff, or do you use it for tutors, or...
It's a little bit of both, and it's been evolving over the last couple of years. You know, I think it started out primarily as full-time staffing. And we've been giving more flexibility to different, different schools, if they want to do the tutoring model or whatever, to do it that way. But it's always, as you, as you understand from the paperwork that has to go back and forth, it's, you know, you have to really make up a case for how you're going to spend your dollars. Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Tom?
Yeah, can you give us a sense of how important the autonomies you came through Level 5 and then negotiated with your union have been to the improvement of schools?
You know, I think they were pretty important. I think, I think there was a recognition that, you know, we, we were really struggling as a school district, and we had to change things. And with that said, we really wanted to do it with the teachers' union. And, you know, the president and I don't always agree, but no one could ever doubt the respect I have for him or the passion he has for the schools and the kids of Lawrence. And so, from that kind of base, we both want what's good for kids, and we were able to kind of work it out. And it's, you know, it's an ongoing thing. It's not perfect, but, you know, we believe that doing it together is probably the best way to go for us.
And can I add to that? You mentioned leadership as a key lever, and you also alluded to extended learning time. Can you give us a sense of what you think are the biggest impactful decisions that a district can make?
Sure. I mean, we lengthen our school day in the K-8 space. I'm not really sure, I believe in a longer school day for high school kids. They have sports, jobs, boyfriends and girlfriends, they have other things that they have to do. But in a school district like ours, where we needed more time for our kids to make up ground, we had to get that time in. But it has to be time used well. We've seen schools that have taken extra time and kind of squandered it. And so, it was important for us to really dig deep on the planning. And by the way, time used well is, sometimes it's about individualizing instruction for kids and really ramping up the academics. But I think it's also about adding robotics and adding the debate league and having kids learn to swim and things like that. We've also spent some more time on that.
I was wondering if I can just add a couple of things, Jeff. More time in every school?
All K-8 schools, yeah.
And can you give us a range, what'd that look like?
So, they had some flexibility on how many hours they had to choose, but, you know, everyone had to kind of go, I wouldn't say a minimum hour and 20 minutes or an hour and a half longer, but some schools lengthened it to two and a half hours or what have you. We still have some schools that, that tell me how long they're going, and I remind them that my school in Boston went from 7:00 in the morning till 4:45 in the afternoon, longer than any Lawrence public school does right now. So, it's hard, you know? You've got to really, you've got to schedule well, you've got to make sure that you keep your teachers refreshed, you've got to, it's really got to be thoughtful implementation to do it well. But the benefits are amazing to kids. I, I am hoping it happens at my kid's school in Boston, because, I mean, the reality is, a lot of parents are all working. So, kids don't have a lot to do, parents got to program, school program or whatever. And so, you know, I think that time is valuable, especially if it's, if it's really done well.
And you, hey, teachers received a stipend in Lawrence?
Teachers got tiered stipends based on how many hours they did. If they did an extra amount of hours, they got 2,000, this amount, 2,500.
Great. Go ahead, Mr. Brennan.
Yeah, a question about the extended day at the school, at the school. So, was it, was it all in? Could a parent or family opt out?
Not in the K-8 space.
And how did you kind of negotiate?
You know, we kind of set a floor on the minimum number of hours, and then we let the schools decide how they wanted to set up their school day. And so, that was with teacher input, parent input, and what have you. And, you know, I think it's an ongoing discussion. Some schools, I think, have added the minimum number of hours and may want to have more hours next year. Conversely, some schools may say, boy, we've kind of overreached, and maybe we need to still have a longer day, but not as much time as we had. And so, we're trying to put a lot more of the decision-making down at the school level, and then they bring the plans to them.
And the staffing autonomies, were they granted at every school, or did you just have that in the partner schools?
I think staffing autonomies were primarily at the partner school level.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, can you just expound a little bit on the collaboration with the partner schools? You and I talked briefly about, for instance, I think it was Community Day that's had a great DLL program in the Gilmet School.
Sure, so...
Work on the ground, because I think the cross-pollination is one important point.
Yeah, so I, I think what we've seen is, and this was not imposed by me, it just kind of happened generally, because we had principals go to meetings together, I think we saw principals just connecting with each other. So, the community group has been a high-performing group in Lawrence. They came in, they said, wow, you know, we're really struggling with our English language learner kids. Let's go over to the Gilmet School, which is not an EMO partner, just a traditional Level 1 school in Lawrence, who does an amazing job with second language learners, and let's see what they're doing. And we borrow that. And I think at the same time, the Gilmet people went over and mixed up some things from the community group. And so, you're seeing these alliances built. Because it's still all inside one umbrella, and it's still inside the school system, you know, I think we've treated kind of people as everyone's the same.
And just one more note on the extended day. Can you talk about what it meant for educators? I mean, we're, we're big into the NCTL process with Collinsville School here. Remember Ms. Manning? She's over there.
Where is Ms. Manning?
She is.
Hi, Ms. Manning. Ms. Manning interviewed me for an assistant principal job 20 years ago. She didn't give it to me.
No, her...
I was stupid. I think I'm over it.
Can you talk a little bit about what it meant for, for teachers? Because one of the key pieces we've found here at Collins digging down, and frankly, in all the districts we've thought about it, is just the collaboration time, the time to really look at the data, all the tools that you have, having the additional time...
So, the longer time has been great. I think, you know, I think some teachers are tired, because in their first year, you have to get used to it. But I've also heard from just a ton of teachers, particularly on my cabinet, that say, to have that time to plan with my colleagues inside the school day is really important. I think in the, in a traditional school day, things are so rushed sometimes, you don't have time to talk, to breathe, and to, to work with your colleagues. And so, that's been a real blessing for them. You know, the kids might be out at the Y learning to swim, and the teachers get together and work on lessons. And that's, you know, fundamentally, we think that, you know, the rubber meets the road in the classrooms, and that's where we've got to make sure that our teachers, you know, have the time they need to succeed.
Great.
Yeah, speaking specifically to the EMO or EMO partners, can you talk a little bit about the, the leadership of the EMO and how they are working with the district leadership? I bet, I know that's, that's a concern, you know, are they going to come in and kind of do their own thing? Have some of any input from district leadership?
Yeah, I mean, listen, it's, it's not a perfect relationship in any way, but I think we've really tried to treat them as kind of like new members of our family. We spent a lot of money to get the Lawrence Teacher Partnership School fixed up, spent a lot of money to get, you know, to make it a great place for kids to go to school. We brought in a lot of resources for other schools to kind of launch their programming, to make sure they have what they need, whether it's desks or, or, you know, MEOs or what have you. And we just want to really put them in a, in a situation where they feel like they can succeed. At the same token, you know, sometimes there's policies we disagree on, like this superintendent's office gets a call, a kid's waiting outside in the morning, and it's a very cold morning, and, you know, the organization says, well, our policy isn't to let kids into a certain hour. And I have to intervene and say, I appreciate the policy, but we have to now think about, you know, a child's well-being, and you need to understand that there are going to be times when you have to be flexible. And, you know, I think there's got to be flexibility on our side and their side to make it work. But because, you know, they're part of the district, I think they've been pretty respectful in those discussions.
Mr. Fleming?
Who tutors the principals in the EMO schools?
So, the EMOs recommend the principals to me, and then I make a decision.
You have the final say.
I have the final say, but I've approved every one of the recommendations, whether it came from the union.
You have the final, you have the final say.
Yeah.
And do you operate with any boards or trustees in any of those EMO schools?
I think the Lawrence Teacher Partnership School has a board. I don't know if other people have boards. I don't think they do, but they're not...
Do you have a school committee anymore?
We do.
And finally, you have MOUs or contracts with those, with those EMOs?
We do. We have three-year contracts with each one of those.
Three-year contracts?
Yeah.
Specifically, three-year contracts?
Three-year contracts, yeah.
And do you have an exit strategy built into those contracts or MOUs?
The only exit strategy I have is if the MOUs don't live, EMOs don't live up to their contracts, and then...
Is there a notice requirement, or can you do it the first day or the first...
Yeah, I'll have to go back and look on the MOU, but I think you have to give, you know, fair warning, 60 days' notice or something like that. And that, maybe it's 90 days. And that, maybe it's 90 days. I'll have to look at it.
No more than that, right?
Uh, let me get back to you on it. I know it's probably a critical issue for you, but.
It might be a critical issue.
Be that as it may. Uh, so, yeah, so, I mean, listen, but we don't, we're viewing them as part of our district, right? So, it's, this is all part of what we do in Lawrence. These are our people. These are union members. These are, these are Lawrence public school workers. So, it's not, you know, I, I think the impression I'm getting from two folks is that, you know, this is somehow outside the district. That's not what we're about at all.
Well, I don't understand how those boards of trustees are within the district because we have, we, we have some experience as a school committee. Most of us on the school committee have some experience with a RSP and China Woods in the city of Salem that we create. But we still have differences in terms of the management of that school with the board of trustees. And I, for one, feel powerless over that board of trustees. Whatever they say goes. And I don't know how that's resolved in Lawrence.
Well, um, I would say that, you know, when we talk about the unions' board, like we have constant communication. We went to professional development trainings with them in New York. We are trying to work on this together. And, you know, I think we're just going to work it out because at the end of the day, the only thing that matters is kids doing better and.
And I don't think you have an idea.
Yeah, no, I get it.
One way or another, that's what we're trying to do here.
You know, I think it's, if you guys have the willpower to do it, you're going to get it done. I mean, it's really.
Anything else? Any other questions from committee members? Dr. Walsh?
That issue that Mr. Fleming just brought up concerning the principal and you explained your hiring of principals, that they will recommend people.
Yeah.
What does your memorandum of understanding with them say? That they will recommend?
I think it's recommended and the superintendent has the final say.
Because ours here says, "The school operator shall select," another "shall," maybe they should say "may." "The school operator shall select the principal," et cetera.
Yeah.
"The, uh, to the extent that the Salem Public School Superintendent's approval to any of the foregoing actions is required by law, it shall not be unreasonably withheld, conditioned or delayed. Furthermore, to the extent the Salem Public School Superintendent has independent authority by law to take any of the foregoing actions, such actions shall be taken by the superintendent only pursuant to a recommendation from the school operator."
Okay, that's not the.
That does not sound like your memorandum of understanding.
I think ours might be slightly different.
Shall it may.
So, I mean, look, I come from a family of attorneys and apparently, thank God, I didn't go into that myself. But, you know, listen, what we're talking about, what.
This is very important to us and that is a significant difference.
I see, uh, the import. For me, you know, we, we had to give some concessions certainly and we also had to recognize that we had to do things differently. And, you know, we, as a district, took a slight leap of faith because we felt like we've got to do better by kids.
There is a distinction in the Level Five requirements as well with statute that as a receiver, I, I, there are different, different autonomies that you have as opposed to the school operator. I just think that's an important clarification, both on the contract term and years and some of those personnel decisions.
This memorandum of understanding position makes the Level Four school in Salem a more stringent situation than a Level Five district in Lawrence.
Right. My, my point is the Level Five has a receiver that has a lot more autonomies in various areas than a Level Four district, Dr. Walsh.
Yes, and Mr. Riley is the receiver.
That's correct. So, I think.
And he has the authority.
I have broad authority under statute to make changes.
And you have the, well, you have the authority that any superintendent would have to hire. Basically, it's the same authority that a superintendent of schools has.
No, I have the authority of the, um, superintendency and the school committee. I have the authority to limit or suspend collective bargaining rights. I have different authority.
I'm just talking about this one issue of who hires principals. They recommend you hire.
Uh, that's been what's happened. I've taken their recommendations.
You didn't have to.
I'll have to go back and look, but I don't.
Any other questions from committee members? Any other quizzes for Mr. Riley while he's here? Thank you so much for sharing with us, um, the experience you had there and, uh, obviously we wish you very well and appreciate you coming out tonight.
Okay, guys, thanks so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, we are back on with respect to.
Can I just interrupt one time?
Yeah.
My, my chief of staff, the brains of the operation, tells me I have 60 days which I can terminate the contract.
So, I, within our agenda today, I did say we'd have ample time for questions and comments, so without any objection from the committee members, I would just like to make sure we do that now. We'd ask anyone who'd like to offer a question or comment with respect to this evening's agenda, I'd just simply state your name and address for the record and you can come to the podium just so they can pick it up on cable. And, uh, this is one of the two opportunities. Are there any questions or comments from audience members? Now would be an opportunity to.
Tom Fury, 26th, Dunlop Street, Councilor Large. For 18 years, 12 years on the school committee, parent of five children that went to Salem schools, Collinsville School and High School, in which were a high elementary school. As a teacher for 40 years, AFT member for all those years, on the executive board to the power development of the state level, union member for 40 years, 17 and let alone. I come here to ask you to show courage and wisdom. Tonight, the serenity prayer is very appropriate. God grant me the serenity to know the things I can change. Uh, God grant me the serenity to know the things, things I can change. God grant me the courage to know that I cannot change. God grant me the power and wisdom of the things that I can change. The serenity prayer that we are familiar with. As we were coming in this, this evening, I was speaking to the school committee in Fleming and I had the chance and the opportunity and the honor to go to JFK Library yesterday and see the Profiles in College Award, uh, given to former President, President George Bush and Mayor of Georgia. President George Bush received the Profiles in College, George Bush the first, received the Profiles in College Award for going against the stream and going for taxes, which he stood for in the election. No, no taxes. And the mayor of a little small town in Georgia stood up for, in his little small town of 600, he stood up for courage in the Profiles in College Award that he received yesterday morning for diversity, immigration reform required in a small town. George Bush lost his election standing up for Profiles in College. And he got that award. His granddaughter came out yesterday, Marlon Bush, and mayor of that little town, lost his reelection, even though he did sidewalks and everything else that a normal mayor does and gardens and things like that. He stood up for courage. I think what you really need to show tonight is courage, time for change. As the mayor said, as the superintendent of Lawrence said, "A leap of faith." I think you strongly need to show courage. It's not easy to show courage on an audience like this and going against the tide, sailing against the wind. That emblem behind us is very important. Leaders of Salem in the past and the present and the future, the greatness of Salem, the greatness of Salem, we're going to turn the tide, sail against the wind. So, I urge you sincerely, as a teacher for 40 years, as a parent, five children, as an elected official for 30 years, to make change, to make that leap of faith, as the superintendent says, to go for Horace Mann. Horace Mann is a local name, it's very familiar to Salem, Horace Mann's goal. He came from Salem, he transformed education, he took courage to change the educational system in Massachusetts, Horace Mann. So, I believe, I hope you show courage tonight to change, a leap of faith. The Bentley School, beautiful school, great faculty, great kids, they deserve nothing but the rest, rest. And I urge you, that leap of faith, Horace Mann, Charles School, give it a chance, give it the time and the investment. Not easy, but courage and wisdom, the serenity prayer tonight is very appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the audience, if you could just please give us your name and address for the record.
Joyce Harrington, 27th Grant Road, President's Teachers Union. Throughout this entire process, I'm kind of dismayed and disheartened by some of the folks on this committee because, um, there's been some insulting comments made about staff here at the Bentley School. And, um, a few things that have been said, um, are very concerning. It seems like some of the issues have been dumped at their doorstep and they're getting the blame when in fact, some of the, um, decisions were well out of their control. For example, that the first year of the turnaround plan, there was one reading program implemented and at the end it was discarded and they put in a second one. Um, but some of the comments that have been made, um, I believe some of these are from the, um, presentation here by the Blueprint Company, saying that high-quality caring, supportive adults in every classroom. I'd like to know what's there now because I see very high-quality caring, supportive people in there every day. Staff dedicated to helping each child achieve to their highest potential. That's what these people are doing every single day. Strong belief that every child can succeed. That's their mantra. That's what they're doing. That's what they're trying to do. From last week's Salem Evening News, it says, "We know it's going to take more than a year to make an impact, so we suggested they bring Blueprint and keep them on because it takes more than a year to make an impact." 18 months, okay, so that was more than a year, but that wasn't the 36 months that was given to them when they began. Very concerning. "We're not giving up on the Bentley. We're just reorganizing some special things needed at this school." I don't get it. Reorganizing, does that mean taking all of the staff that's been there, working hard, doing what they've been told and in there with, for those kids every single day? So, we're just going to reorganize and take them out? Okay. Few other things, you know, collaboration with colleagues. Folks are doing these things. I don't understand. And it's just disheartening to me that this committee has not been more supporting of these folks and the work that they're doing every single day. Some folks are, some folks are not. So, I'm, when somebody comes in from the outside and says that they are going to come in and put in a high-quality caring, supportive adult, I don't see here licensed and/or certified that's high quality, but I don't know. Good luck.